Good afternoon. It's 4:30 PM on Tuesday, December 5th, 2023. We'll call the City Council meeting of the city of New Ulm to order. At this time, item number one tonight is the consent agenda. Counselors, what are your wishes?
I'll offer a motion to approve those.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. At this time, we will move down to new business. Item number 5.1 in regards to a MinDOT agreement number 105-3722. We do have representatives from MinDOT here to present to us on the potential roundabout construction. Good afternoon, gentlemen. Oh, Joe. Yes, sorry. Mr. Schonheim, go ahead.
Madam President, City Counselors, Matt Thebert, project manager from MinDOT District 7, is here to present the project tonight in the MinDOT agreement. As you're well aware, this agreement will be for the construction of roundabout at Highway 14 and North Highland Avenue. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. The-
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Joe. Everybody hear me okay on that? All right. And thank you, Mayor, members of the council, members of the city staff. Thank you for having us this evening. As Joe mentioned, we're here this evening for the New Ulm Roundabout Project at North Highland Avenue and Highway 14. So in front of you is an agreement for cooperative construction of that roundabout with MinDOT. In addition, I've provided a one-pager, which is a quick summary of the project itself. On that one pager is a quick overview of the project. We've left extra copies in the back. If you do need additional copies, I can certainly provide those to members of the community as well, too. The project will start early 2024, so beginning of May is when we're planning on kicking it off with the goal of having the bulk of the construction wrapped up by right around the Fourth of July timeframe. There will be a detour with the project. On the backside of that one pager outlines the route that we'll be showing for that detour. So there will be disruption to traffic. Access to local businesses through the frontage network will still be maintained, so people will still be able to get to all the businesses in the area. With that, is there any questions that members of the council have relating to the agreement, the project itself, or anything from MinDOT?
Can you talk a little bit about the detour?
Yep, absolutely. Anything in particular that you had a question-
I'm sure that's the questions that I'm gonna get. I live up in that area. And is it a complete detour, partial detour?
Yes, so we are going to have the road closed. So if you look at on that detour map, the red zone that is right at the intersection will have a hard closure. Right in here, this red zone will be a hard closure. That'll be where construction will be taking place, so no traffic through there. We will have some access for people to get to the frontage road networks that go up to the businesses there on the north side. Since there is no access coming off between Garden Street and North Highland Avenue, there will be a hard closure. There also exists there near Garden Street, too, because there's no way to come off that to any other accesses on that. So but all the other networks will be remained accessible to the local businesses that that's the only way to get to them. But any through traffic that'll be coming through will be directed coming from the west, heading east up on 12, County Road 12, around on County Road 29, which turns into Garden Street once you get into town, and then back on to Highway 14, and then the inverse of that going the other direction.
Madam President, City Counselors, this will be the same detour that was used during the construction of the Palmer Avenue or the Menards Roundabout.
Thank you.
Will the speed limit change? I know when you leave cash-wise and come this direction, I think it's 60 miles an hour, but that's gonna have to be reduced.
That's 50, yes, there.
What's that?
It's 50 still at that.
Okay.
Till you get to-
But that won't change. You don't-
We're not planning on changing any speeds. So typically what happens is if there is something that would be requested by a local agency to take a look at that, a speed study would have to be conducted to take a look at any changes in speed. And usually that has to do with the traffic patterns than the result from any changes to any roadway. So if there is something that is requested, a speed study is done. But we always caution that if a speed study is done, there's no guarantee on what it's gonna have for results. There could be increases in some areas and decreases in others.
And how long? When's the project expecting to be done?
So the goal is to have it wrapped up by right around the Fourth of July, and there'll still be some cleanup work. But it's kind of that early May to beginning of July timeframe is what we're trying.
I know it's a dangerous intersection, and I've heard it from so many people, so I'm definitely looking forward to this project.
Excellent. Yep, we are as well, and looking to get in there and done with it as soon as we can and quickly as we can to get everybody back on the highway and running through that location.
Thank you.
I'm just gonna ask if there's any possibility that it would start before May, or is that kind of the hard start date that you guys have in mind?
We will have some tree clearing that'll occur in the March timeframe, so you will see some construction activity. We'll be letting the project the end of January of 2024, so getting a construction on board contractor to do the work, get the trees cleared. There's only a few that we need to clear, some grubbing and things like that. The main reason is we want to wait till spring load restrictions come off to put people onto the detour, and that's part of the reason behind that early May timeframe, is to get those load restrictions off, and then we can get people onto the county road network for the detour. And so that's the intention behind that timeframe.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you.
Joe, I'll ask you this, because I'm sure we'll get questions as well. Two and a half million dollar project. What's gonna end up being the cost to local folks?
Sure. Madam President, City Counselors, this total city obligation is $688,340.63. Of that, $573,617.19 is federal HCP money. So that is Highway Safety Improvement Funds that we applied for and received. The remaining balance, that $144,000 that would remain, we will pay using MSAS funds, so it has no impact to our bond issue in 2024.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Move it forward. I'll offer the resolution approving Cooperative Construction Agreement Number 1053722 with the State of Minnesota Department of Transportation for Project 0804-119, roundabout construction at the intersection of Trunk Highway 14 and North Highland Avenue. Authorize the city manager and finance director to sign the agreement for and on behalf of the city.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for coming down.
At this time, we will move back up to item number two, licenses and permits. Item number 2.1 is a gravel pit license.
I'll offer a motion to approve the renewal of the gravel pit license for M&amp;R Paving and Excavating Incorporated for the period beginning January 1, 2024, and ending December 31, 2024.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Moving on to 3.1, we have a simple lot division for Lot 2, Block 1, Besmer subdivision. Mr. Schnobrick.
Yes. Madam President, members of the City Council, the Planning Commission considered this matter at their November 30th meeting and recommended approval of the request. The applicant is Wade Besmer on behalf of the Judith A. Besmer Trust. The street address of the property is 12846 Shag Road, and this property is generally located east of Highway 14 and west of Shag Road, and it is about one-fifth of a mile from the Cottonwood River Bridge on Highway 15. So one thing you will note is that this particular request is outside of the city limits and is located in Cottonwood Township. And the reason that we are considering this request is that back in 2003, the city of New Ulm extended their subdivision regulations into portions of Milford and Cottonwood Township, and that is authorized by state statute. The reason that we did that is to ensure that the city's development pattern could continue into areas of Cottonwood and Milford Township if development were to take place there in the in the future. The area that we extended our subdivision regulations into is the same area that our Public Utilities Electric Department can provide service for, so we thought it was important for those two things to to match. And so this particular request is subject to our regulations. It's also subject to our approval process. So the Besmer Trust is proposing to subdivide Lot 2 into two parcels. Lot 2 has a total lot area of 2.52 acres. One of the parcels, which is labeled Parcel B, will be sold to Dale Walden. He is the property owner to the west of this particular property. City staff has reviewed this request with both the Brown County Recorder and the Brown County Zoning Administrator. Parcel B is approximately 50 feet wide by 170 feet in length. Total area is 0.2 acres, so we're not talking about a large parcel of property. This particular request qualifies for a simple lot division for two reasons. One is that no new building lot will be created by the lot division, and secondly, the proposed new lot line is parallel to the existing rear lot line of the Walden property. In the staff report, there are the proposed new legal descriptions that would result from the simple lot division. There's one for Parcel A, and there's another for Parcel B. The Planning Commission recommended three conditions. Those conditions were as follows. Number one, the lot division would be effective upon the filing of the resolution approving this request with the Brown County Recorder's Office. Number two, any structures built on either Parcel A or Parcel B shall follow the setback requirements found in the Brown County zoning ordinance. And number three, Parcel B will be combined with the existing Walden property to form one parcel of property for tax and building purposes, and the future legal description for the Walden Walden property with Parcel B is also provided in the staff report. That would conclude the report from the Planning Commission.
Thank you, Mr. Schnobrick.
Well, I'm gonna offer a resolution approving the simple lot division of Lot 2, Block 1, Besmer subdivision.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Thank you. Item number 4.1 is set Storm Water Monthly Fee Start Date of Fee.
Madam President, City Counselors, after the November 7th City Council work session in which you provided guidance on the proposed fee amounts, staff put together the attached spreadsheet that have three scenarios listed within your packet for review. The monthly fee amounts listed were $3, $3.25, and $3.50 per month as options, and we can, I have the worksheet active tonight, so if you want to look at any fees other than those, I can pull that information for you as well. So before you tonight would be, we're proposing for council to set that fee and then the start date of the fee as well.
Well, I think when we talked about this at our work session, we were leaning at that first one or middle one, and also looking at a July start date, I think is what we were kind of talking about. If I remember right.
$3.25.
$3.25.
That's what I-
$25. Yep, that's what I remember.
And yes, cycle-wise, I think July was when we talked about, too, right?
And refresh my memory, Joe. So the max monthly fee of $80.60, like that's the most that somebody would pay on their utility bill for this.
And that would be a large, totally impervious parcel, so-
Right.
With a giant parking lot or something of that nature.
Sure.
And if that facility were to have some sort of onsite treatment, there would be a deduction for that.
Okay.
As well. And that spreadsheet has all of that taken into account.
Okay. Yes, if I remember from the presentation, yeah, the $3.25 is, I think, a good start for this.
I mean, because if we did the three, we'd probably be back at it in a year to try to begin, so try to hit the happy median for covering the expenses.
A lot could be dependent on who we end up hiring, too. If we hire someone with a lot of experience or entry level, you know, that can, you know, change that dollar system on the employee.
And Nicole, regarding this, would this be very difficult to set up in the system for the-
No, we've been through all that already, and Pauline's ready to put all that in as we need to, whenever we're ready to start.
So could we potentially look at something sooner than July or no, or?
We had in that work session, though, with PUC's issues going on, that's why we kind of decided July, we'll wait.
Yeah, rather than-
July, the first bill it shows up on would be their August bill.
August bill.
Okay. I mean, I think we're all in agreement that this, you know-
It's not gonna go away.
So-
Has to happen.
Yes, it does. You know, it's just, it happens with development, so. Okay, well then I guess I would be looking, yeah.
I'll go ahead and offer a resolution setting the storm water equivalent residential unit fee at $3.25 per month, the max area ratio at 10, and the start date for fee implementation for July of 2024, and adding the fee to the city 2024 fee schedule.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Do we need a specific date in July, like July 1, or are we good with July?
I mean, clarify July.
I'll say July 1 of 2024.
Second on the July 1.
Okay, first and a second. Any additional discussion? All right, Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Okay, item number 4.2, Summary of Performance Evaluation for City Manager Chris Dalton.
You know, I looked this over, being, having attended some of the meetings here, and there's minimal changes here in going from meetings from every month to every other month, and some cleanup language. So I'm gonna go ahead and offer the resolution to-
I think you're on a different item.
Oh, am I on the wrong one?
Yeah, right.
We're on 4.2.
Sorry.
That's okay. So Summary of Performance Evaluation for City Manager Chris Dalton. So we are to receive a note in the official meeting minutes. The summary, the closed meeting that we held on Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, regarding annual performance evaluation, goals, and expectations for City Manager Chris Dalton as set forth in Minnesota statute, 13D.05 subdivision 3A, 13D.01 subdivision 3, so those two items. Should I read the overview, or do we just, can we just take that in?
I think we have to read it.
No, that's fine. Okay, I will read this into the record. So on Tuesday, November 21st, following the meeting of the City Council, members of the City Council entered into a closed session to discuss the results of a performance survey for City Manager Chris Dalton. This review process is done annually to conduct a review of the City Manager Dalton's work, share feedback and goals, and to provide a general evaluation of Mr. Dalton's performance based upon prior goals and to discuss future goals. The survey to evaluate Mr. Dalton's performance was sent to all City Council members, mayor, department heads within the city, and PUC, and administrative staff that work closely with Mr. Dalton. The evaluation was completed by 100% of recipients with the following summarized results. The feedback and scoring of Mr. Dalton was overwhelmingly positive, with most indicating that Chris is meeting or exceeding expectations of his position. The consensus from department heads indicate they feel empowered to do their jobs and that Chris is there to support when needed. Chris continues to do a good job with communication. However, several comments noted he can provide counsel with more frequent communication regarding city matters. Chris continues to listen and respond to new ideas and works well with other organizations and local government groups. Chris indicated he will continue to work on increasing communication and that he always has an open-door policy for staff, citizens, and business leader concerns. The counselors were in agreement that Chris should continue to work on increasing his communication with counselors and others. Overall, the council feels Chris is meeting or exceeding what is expected of his position. Goals for 2024 include a citywide strategic plan, development for George's Ballroom, look at parking hours for downtown and citywide, new business card designs for mayor, economic development director, and city manager, take the first steps to become a credentialed city manager, and to improve communications with counselors and staff. That summarizes the review of City Manager Dalton.
I think that encapsulates everything very well of what we discussed. So I will go ahead and receive the note in the official meeting minutes. The summary of the closed meeting held on Tuesday, November 21st, 2023, regarding annual performance evaluation, goals, and expectations for City Manager Chris Dalton as set forth in Minnesota statute, 13D.05 subdivision 3A, 13D.01 subdivision 3.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. At this time, we are going to move down to item number 5.2 regarding Brown Lion Redwood Renville Drug Task Force Joint Powers Agreement.
That's why I started to make the motion, but I see Chief Markert here, and he has more information.
Madam President, members of the council, I really don't, other than that the resolution addresses revisions of the joint powers agreement for the Brown Lion Redwood Renville Drug Task Force. Essentially, it, what's being recommended, we had approved this at our last joint powers board meeting, and basically, the recommendation is that we're able to meet every other month versus monthly, and this permits basically our fiscal agent to handle larger sums of money between meetings. And it's important to note that our fiscal agent is the city of New Ulm. So unless there's questions or anything, I think the revisions are pretty straightforward.
And you're okay with Ulm, chief? I mean, good to go.
I am. I mean, whenever we meet, we have, I think it's, we have a very active board. We attend meetings on a regular basis, you know, across the state of Minnesota. That isn't always true with the violent crimes boards, the joint powers boards, but ours are very active. You know, we consider all the work that they're doing very important and benefits the communities that are served. Having that said, all of us are driving quite a ways, all the board members and staff, for basically what turns out to be a fairly short meetings, and we just believe that meeting every other month is much more efficient use of time.
Yeah, I've been very impressed with the meetings. You know, they have the county personnel, the city personnel, the law enforcement folks, and they are very involved and very, like, a bunch of different groups get up and talk, and so it's a good meeting. So I'll go back to what I was doing before.
Before you make that motion, though, make sure part of that is to authorize the city manager and the mayor to sign the the JPA.
Oh, okay. So I'll offer the resolution to approve proposed revisions to the Brown Lion Redwood Renville Drug Task Force Joint Powers Board as presented and authorize our city manager to sign appropriate documents.
And mayor.
And the mayor to sign-
Second.
Of course, the mayor.
Thank you, chief, and we do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker.
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 5.3, we have Minnesota Voter Account Funds Agreement with Brown County.
Counselors, this was just a kind of a very short thing that we just had to throw in for for your approval. Short story is that the state allocated funds to the different counties for for voter expenses. Most specifically, I believe, our county used it for new new equipment. This is just authorizing the county to hold on to that money rather than distributing it to the different cities within the county. The county got a total of $7,400. So, I mean, our portion would be very small if they distributed it, and then we would have to make sure we're doing all the reporting that we need to to the state regarding those funds. So it's just easier if the county can hold on to those funds and use it for those, for the equipment expenses.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion authorize the finance director to sign the state of Minnesota Voting Operations Technology and Election Resources Voter Account County Municipality Agreement allowing Brown County to retain 100% of the Minnesota Voter Account Funds.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 5.4, Recreation Center Fieldhouse Air Handling Unit Replacement. Mr. Shugal.
Yes, thank you, Council President Becker, City Council. I'm here tonight asking for approval, asking you to approve plans and specifications, order advertisement for bids, set bid opening date, and authorize staff to receive and open bids for the Recreation Center Air Handling Unit Replacement Project, and that would happen on Tuesday, January 9th in the City Council chambers. So really, this project is replacing a 42-year-old air handling unit, or air handling units that is at the end of its life cycle, and we're seeing continuous maintenance and piecing it together. And what this project would do is replace the existing system, update it, and put it on, replace it onto the roof. Right now, it's existing into the fieldhouse. So big project that that we're expecting within your packet is- So big project that that we're expecting within your packet is the bid and construction schedule, and also a cost estimate of approximate from our from our engineering firm that was provided. I am here with tonight for any questions that you may have regarding this project. We will see significant reduction of our field house during this time, so our rec center, so that that area would be closed. We don't have a specific or exact amount of time at this moment, but we're already making plans for how to maneuver that.
Comment is, I'm surprised it went to 42 years. I'm thinking along.
Their money's worth.
I'm going to offer the resolution approving plans and specs, ordering advertisement for bids, set bid opening date, and authorize the staff to receive and open bids for the Recreation Center Fieldhouse Air Handling Unit Replacement Project on Tuesday, January 9 at 2:00 PM in the council chambers.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion?
One question for Nicole. It says $765,000 that's coming out of the original sales tax fund. How much more or what's all total of that account?
I want to say there's like 1.8 million in there, if I remember correctly, in the original balance. There's more in the new balance, but in the old balance.
Is that part of the excess funds from the above and beyond the debt service ratio?
Yep.
That our predecessors put in place, which was very, very smart.
I guess it was.
Yes, things need to be maintained, even 42 years later, right? Okay, any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. Thank you. Item number 5.5, 2024 Convention and Visitors Bureau Budget.
With proposed amount, we didn't get to see the 2023 amounts. Sarah, is there anything major changes here in other than just cost of living and all that kind of good stuff?
Um, no, the, sorry, should I go?
Yeah, probably better. My always my always question is, anything major that we should be looking at here?
Um, no, I don't think so. We raised the lodging tax 5,000, I think, but otherwise, I think it's about pretty much on par.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, of course.
Really no changes. I'll offer a motion to approve the 2024 budget for the Convention and Visitors Bureau beginning January 1, 2024.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That motion does carry. Item number 5.6, Fire Department Donation.
I'll offer a resolution to accept a $250 donation from the Brown County Ag Society.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Director Jorgensen, please call the roll.
Counselor Mack?
Yes.
Counselor Christian?
Yes.
Counselor Schultz?
Yes.
Counselor Wormka?
Yes.
President Becker?
Yes, that motion does carry. Item number 6.1, Reported Claims Paid.
Make a motion to accept a list of claims paid in the amount of $1,452,719.64.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any additional discussion? Those in favor signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion does carry with no additional business. This meeting is adjourned. The budget meeting will begin at 6:00 PM.